I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five zero. Do we have any public comment? No. Oh, here we go. Uh, moving on to president's comments, we have the employees of the month. For February, um, certified staff is Christina Terry, the AG, or the AG teacher at Hart Career Center. Her nominating colleague shared that she's doing the work of two teachers this year and has also helped me a tremendous amount. We congratulate Ms. Terry. Um, with support staff, it's Ethan Wiley, he's the PLTW teacher at Eugene Field. His nominating colleague shared that Ethan has jumped into teaching STEM and PLTW. He is making great connections with students and creating an exciting learning environment. He's building a great foundation for students to get them excited to learn about STEM and the science topics. Does anybody else have anything to say? Matt?
I do, I would like to congratulate the Mexico School District on a grant. Um, I know that Missy Dymakie, Director of Speech, or Special Services, and also Whitney Lewis, a speech language pathologist, worked on, on this grant. Um, it's a bilingual board, uh, communication board, uh, it's going to go in over at Eugene Field Elementary, and it's to help support students who are non-verbal. I, I think that's a terrific thing, and I just want to give them a shout out.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else? Alright, we move on. Um, do I have a, well, the consent agenda, does anybody have any questions, or is there something that you want to explain on the consent agenda? Dr. Lenz?
Um, no, I would draw attention to the PIM grant program evaluation, I'm not gonna try to read through it, but, there's been some important work that's taken place with the PIM grant, there's a lot of federal programs that are, that are under scrutiny right now, um, in grants, but, you know, within the PIM grant application that the district submitted, it stated that we would do an annual evaluation. At, at one point, it looked like there was, um, the, there was money in the budget of the grant to pay an outside group to, to come in and do the evaluation, but we just really hadn't spent enough money to justify hiring somebody to come in and evaluate it. But we still wanted to, to provide that evaluation as we stated we would, so this was done internally, and it does, it lists out the initiatives that have been funded by the PIM grant. And I feel like it's important to let people know what we're doing with that, with that federal money, so. There's, if you have questions about it or want to go into greater detail, we can sure do that. Have a little bit more to say about it in the superintendent's report, but.
I think it gives us a good overview, which we haven't had in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are we using the dual credit part, are we paying for some students with that?
Yeah, so, uh, the PIM grant had, you know, four pillars, dual credit expansion, industry-recognized credentials, workplace learning opportunities, and, uh, career navigation, post-secondary navigation. So, we, we did pay, first semester, we paid for everybody that signed up for dual credit. And the way the money flow works is, we cut that check to Moberly Area Community College, and we drew down the money from the US Department of Education. So the other, other agreement that, uh, other things we've done, we paid for the cosmetology kits for kids that are working on their, cosmetology credentials, because that's, uh, industry-recognized credentials, that's another, uh, pillar of the grant. And paid for tuition reimbursement for teachers who are earning their dual credit teaching credentials. And I think, I think we'd all rather see our kids take dual credit with a face-to-face instructor, instructor at the high school. And we have people that are working on getting those credentials to do that, so they're not online. We've supported those teachers with tuition reimbursement. We've also supported teachers at Hart Career Center who, they have the, the industry credentials, but they don't have the teaching credentials, so they're taking classes, they get the teaching credentials, and we've done tuition reimbursement with that, so. All of that money came from the US Department of Education, it wasn't, wasn't part of our local funds, so. We have a relationship with PRI, they're a sub-grantee of the award. They, they hired people to service post-secondary navigators. That's something they would invoice us for, we would pay them and, and then pull down the money from, from the feds. But this is a grant that was affected by the pause. And PRI has really scaled back what they want to do with this grant specifically, so. I think we're all waiting to see what the future holds with, with the US Department of Education grants, but this is the record of what we've done with this grant to date.
Let's say, to put it out, to help with the teachers, that's a good thing, because, on my side, like, the MACC's schedule and our schedule didn't line up.
Right.
He was like, just sitting in the classroom.
Right.
Free time for them, but.
Right.
But then they were done before, I think, too, started after and done before.
Right, yeah, the, the ideal, the goal would be to have.
In class.
Mexico of teachers who, uh, have a master's in math or English, or, they have the credentials to teach dual credit, and still partner with MACC or another, but, but then it works better, like you say, with our class schedule. And then also, I think, face-to-face instruction, most times is better than, than online. Although, I mean, if you, you know, our kids that go to college, they're gonna be taking classes online, and they need to be prepared for that, but. The more we can offer face-to-face, the better, I believe. And the PIM grant was, was, was helping us with that, is we were reimbursing teachers for their, their tuition. Some of that's a little up in the air at the moment, and we hope that clears up between now and the next school year. But, this year one, uh, evaluation, it, it lists the, uh, the initiatives that have been funded, tries to give some facts about how many kids were impacted and, and what the money's been used for.
Dawn, was there anything on the treasures report you wanted to note or not?
Nope.
Nothing that jumped out.
Alright, anybody have any more questions before we move on to vote? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six zero. Item six, approval of bills that require extension. Do I have a motion for number one?
I will make a motion to approve ACH zero one two one eight six to Mommon's Heating and Cooling for one thousand forty-four dollars and sixty cents, and check number one four one nine six six to Wang C A for one thousand two hundred thirty dollars and sixty-four cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
And that needs to abstain, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries four zero two. Do I have a motion for number two?
I'll make a motion to approve check number one four one nine one three to City of Mexico for fifteen thousand seventy-five dollars and ninety-four cents, and ACH number zero one two one two four to Central Bank Mastercard for forty-three thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries.
I understand.
Right, I know there's two extensions. Four zero two. Moving on to seven, reports and presentations, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Lenz?
Continue to engage P E groups, there was a meeting recently to meet with PRI to discuss, uh, some of the changes in the C two C leadership. You know, they promised to keep us informed as they move forward, and try to share out with you all as I can. With the bond, the next big board action that, that'll be considered will be a bid for the middle school renovations. So, we, we're scheduled to have a pre-bid meeting today, we moved that to, to Friday. But the bids will be due on March eleventh, and then bring a bid to you all. Uh, D N R, uh, has approved the permits for the softball field renovation. They want to begin on February seventeenth, turf installation starts on April twenty-first. It's a pretty hard deadline on that, that it's completed before June. Luckily, we haven't encountered any supply chain issues as far as securing HVAC equipment. That's been kind of a problem in school construction, uh, since COVID, but. Right now, I'm told that we'll be able to move forward with the HVAC work this summer as, as scheduled. And, uh, if you guys let me slow down, I can, I know with the weather, maybe move a little faster than normal. With finance, uh, we've got seventy-one percent of our operating revenues, and we've spent fifty-three percent of the operating expenditures. So about right on, on schedule. I would remind you that, you know, in our last month, we pay out a quarter of our personnel expenses, because the teachers get their June, July, and August checks. Uh, that gets coded to this fiscal year, so we should be lagging as far as our expenditures to revenues. I do want to slow down a little bit, um, just with some of the questions around US Department of Education grants, and with the change in leadership, with, with C two C. Take a little time to talk about the grants that are driving most of that work. Cause really, there's four grants that are taking place in Mexico. There's the Full Service Community Grant, the PIM Grant, the BGF Grant, and then the Americor Grant, those are the four. And that, and that's in the order of their dollar amount attached to them. Full Service Community Grant is by far the one that's bringing the most money to the community. It is a mixture of, of private donations and, uh, US Department of Education grants, but I believe it's very much driven by US Department of Education grants. Uh, kind of split that into, for the most part, all of that stays on PRI's books. Those site coordinators, those are their employees, they pay them, but we're not financially responsible for them. So, a lot of that work is completely on PRI's ledger. We have some, whi- which we pay for, and then we submit invoices to PRI, and then they pay us back, not a lot. There's fifty thousand dollars for attendance work, for barrier mitigation and engagement, um, so like the signs that you see around town, about every minute matters, that's paid for that. We've helped out some families with, um, uh, pest eradication, you know, that, that was a barrier to getting them to school, there was one, car repair, that was a barrier to get, get people to school. And then some incentives, or we call them, and, you know, community engagement, you know, to celebrate kids for good attendance, so those are things that we're, we're paying for, and we submit to PRI, and they, they pay us back for. I believe those things, a lot of that's coming out of the private donation, so I, the, some of the things that we're doing, we're, we're doing it with money from the Ballmer Foundation, from the Tyron Lee Foundation, so it's not federal or local dollars. And then the extended learning opportunities, you know, you all have approved stipends for a middle school art, extracurricular, and fitness. So we've been able to expand opportunities for middle school kids, we wouldn't be able to do that if it wasn't for that full-service grant. So on those, we're paying the teachers for the stipends, we're submitting an invoice to PRI, and they, they pay us back. And I feel like there's been a good return on that investment, the amount of participation in those clubs at the middle school is, is impressive. And I think those belonging activities are very important to making kids feel like they're part of the school. So again, the full-service grant's probably the grant that has the biggest ticket, but again, most of that doesn't fall on our books. The PIM grant, and that's one of the grants that, uh, we've gotten some indication that, that'll be paused. Those initiatives are paid for by the district and reimbursed by the US Department of Education, so with dual credit, we pulled that down. Staff tuition reimbursement, we pulled that down. We bought Chromebooks for some of our kids in dual credit, uh, because the Chromebooks that they're trying to do the dual credit classes on are not ideal, weren't working, we're able to, uh, give them better gear. There's a position at the high school that was funded by, by a Rite Ed grant, that grant was stepping back, we're to use the full-service, or the PIM grant to backfill that. It's in the budget narrative as a, as an analyst, it was a position that, that we have on staff already as district, district employee. And then the work-based learning opportunities, this is the one that I think there's maybe a little question about right now, we, we feel like we can keep it going throughout the year, but, the kid's going to work at, uh, the Y, and then the Y pays them, invoices us, we pay that back, we pull it down. We're cautiously optimistic that we can work through that with PRI in the current environment with the grants. We did stop, we had two appointments today. We were gonna go out to, um, the aircraft manufacturer, yeah, and we were gonna go to across the street Tool, Tool Tech, and, and explore getting some kids involved in work-based learning opportunities there. Basically paid in internships, paid apprenticeships, we decided not to expand it, we want to make sure that we can cover what we, what we've tried to do so far, and also the kids at the Y, that's helped them expand their after-school program, so there's a little bit of trickle effect, that people can be able to count on, more structured environment for their kids after school because of, of this. But we're, our hope was, we were gonna be able to say that with our, uh, with the PIM grant, we were able to put kids in manufacturing, aviation, human services. So, some of that again, the, we're in a rapidly evolving environment, I'll try to share with you guys as we can. Kind of lost my train of thought, so tho- those are all the work-based learning, and then paid for cosmetology kids, so the kids can get industry-recognized credentials. Uh, I think our plan would be for next year, kids that were working on welding, that we paid for some of their gear, but all that had been worked, um, before we got this money flowing this year, so there's, I don't know, good opportunities I feel like to invest in workplace, workplace development, if, if we can continue to keep the grant operable. Uh, there are two positions that were gonna be paid for by PRI, and they were gonna invoice us, and that was their, uh, project manager and the post-secondary navigator, I believe they've told those folks that they can't guarantee that those jobs will continue after the end of the school year, so. Again, I don't have all the answers right now, but I just want to put on paper which grants are paying for which things, and, and that we can all be on the same page as far as, you know, the money, you know, where, where is our involvement financially with PRI, where is it? Uh, two smaller grants, but I think they're very important, the Volunteer Generation Fund. Uh, we pay for those stipends, submit invoices to PRI, that's what, that's what established the lead crew at the high school, and I feel like that really helped our freshmen out with that transition this year. And then, uh, there's an MOU to approve tonight for the Americor Grant, that's completely on PRI's. We provide the space, but PRI hires people and it provides tutoring at the high school, so. I feel like all those would be, you know, powerful investments in, in kids. But all of them are, you know, subject actions in Washington DC, so. Not a lot of overlap between our finances and PRI's, but there's enough, I feel like it's probably worth it to talk there. Yeah, you all have questions about any of those grants with PRI and C two C? I thi- I think we can do good work for kids here, I think it's always gonna be a little bit muddy and clumsy, but, kids are benefiting from this work. This weather calculation was accurate on Friday, it's not accurate today. There's another spreadsheet that gets into calculating, uh, if you miss so many days, you get some forgiven, and I haven't looked at that. I was really hoping that I wouldn't have to open up that spreadsheet, but I'm losing confidence that we won't be able to talk of, that we won't have to talk about that. As of right now, we have more hours than what the state requires, and we're not looking at makeup. The forecast for the rest of the week looks terrible. Conference athletics. We had a meeting at Moberly, it was, I, I was impressed with the, the number of schools that showed up, that are listed there. And the meeting wasn't good enough that we decided we were gonna have another one, people wanted to go back and talk to their boards, so. It would be, you know, the question is, is there enough interest to start a new conference? And, you know, I'm sure we'd probably have to have three or four more lunch meetings to come up with the right name for the conference, but I think if we get the right, right schools involved, it could be a really good thing, so. There are a couple districts that I thought were pretty comfortable in, in the conferences they were in, and we had, we had asked for invitations to those conferences and got voted down. So I was kind of surprised, but happy to see some of the schools show up, and guess I'm cautiously optimistic that on February twenty-fifth, maybe they might bring a couple other schools who weren't at the first meeting to, to the table, so. I mean, I feel like our position is, we need to find a conference home. Maybe there were some schools in our conference before that are probably bigger than we want to play all the time, year in and year out, and, uh, they're not on the list right now, but.
What's the ideal number, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna ask what the ideal number of, of schools in a conference is.
I think the magic number is eight.
Eight, okay.
But I, I think that we're, I think it's best if you can get to like ten or twelve, and maybe do some north-south or big-small splits. Cause I think what schools, what, what, what could happen here to some of the other conferences around us that are sitting at eight is where, if two jump, then you're like the N C M C was. So, I mean, I, I think you can start a conference with, with seven, you can start a conference with, with eight, I think the, the ideal would be to be in a position to grow. So I think if we, if we can target schools that are close to the sixty-three corridor, and centrally located, I think that's what's gonna give us the best shot, and I think, I think schools like Marshall and Kirksville are willing to make those, those drives if they can keep the conference scheduled.
Is it realistic to think that the conference would be launched by next school year?
No, I think everybody's schedules are pretty well locked down, and we're still in the N C M C next year. So I think the, the goal would be to, to be ready to launch the year after that, so. That's what my crystal ball has today, it's still, still a little fuzzy, but I, I'm glad that we have another meeting, I'm glad that people. And, you know, we had a pretty candid conversation, like, if we leave this meeting and end up talking to our boards and say the name of your school, is that gonna be okay with you, or is that gonna get you in trouble back in your community, and everybody in that room said no, we'd be, we'd be fine to let people know that we're, we're talking about it, so. I'm sure they're getting, getting feedback back in their communities, uh, as we speak.
So all the schools is listed here, were they one of the schools, like, we had asked and they turned us down, or they all turned down?
I'd say we, we asked for, um, we've had, with, probably the, the conference that we've had the most talks with were the Tri-County Conference. Um, and Hallsville's kind of been our bridge into that, so Hallsville is the only school in the Tri-County Conference on that list. Um, the Clarence Cannon Conference, Centralia, and, uh, and Macon, we also sent formal, like a request, could we join your conference, and got voted down there, too, so. Um, I would say on both of those efforts, we were, you know, shopping with Moberly, and really, if you can bring, you know, two schools in, that, that's what would make the most sense, so. I don't know, uh, like I say, Tri-County, Clarence Cannon, they both, their superintendents have voted to not extend invitations, but on this list, you've got schools that belong to both of those. I would love to see, you know, top more Tri-County schools at the next meeting, so I don't, I don't know if that'll happen or not, but. I think it could.
More questions on that? Alright, moving right along. Uh, the E S E A budget application was finally approved, round three revisions was successful, hit the jackpot, drop the mic, just kidding. It was a big deal, and it was a lot of work, and we were glad to get that approved. Um, it, it funds a lot of big projects in our district, including our preschool and several other positions that I listed there for you. Um, as I talked about last month, we do a monthly culture walk at one of the buildings, and this past month, we went to the middle school, saw lots of great things, uh, as we walked the halls, we got to see a transition period, we got to visit a few classrooms, and, uh, had a deep reading process afterwards to talk about all the things we saw and what they're doing great over there. Um, elementary teaching and learning, some highlights for you, our Title One reading teachers came together, um, to plan a really awesome title night, family literacy night, they brought all three elementary schools together at one of the basketball games on February tenth, and so, we had great turnout of kids and parents, they got to play basketball-themed literacy games, and then, uh, get some snacks, get some free books to take home, and watch some basketball. And I think the night went great, I was really, really impressed with the work that our title teachers did to make that happen. Uh, math curriculum review team is, uh, we've had a bit of a pause due to inclement weather, um, no school, and the flu has hit the buildings, we've got a lot of staff absences, so we kind of had to hit pause on that work, but we're, uh, ready to jump back in it as soon as we're back at school. Um, some team members have been delivering presentations to their colleagues at faculty meetings, and I've been really impressed with their work. Um, one of our team members has gone above and beyond to analyze map index scores from other districts, and then look and see what their math curriculum resource is that they use. She and I just made some phone calls today to continue that work, so it's going really well, I think that we'll end up making a good decision based on our research. And then, finally, on, on elementary, we were able to get all of our core data in for the February count for reading success plans. So every single elementary student, we had to report if they had an R S P, uh, what the status was on that, and then what their area of focus was for their reading deficiency, as well as their, uh, main intervention method. And I appreciate the work of our core data manager and all of the elementary teachers put in some work on that, got it done on time. Uh, Panorama is a program I brought to you guys for approval a couple of months ago, the integration within Infinit Campus has been completed. There is still a big bug that they're working out with our attendance, not working quite right, it didn't mesh with Infinit Campus, so they're working on that. Overall, our student success platform is up and bor- up and running, that's our data dashboard for each kid, that covers their, um, attendance, their discipline data, and their grades, um, their assessment scores. So, teachers will be able to get on there and look and see which students are in the red, and the yellow, and in the green, and work on intervention plans, and one of the best components of the program is the playbook, so, um, our admin will be getting together Friday, if we're here, to, uh, be trained, and then they can then train their teachers on the program, and I hope to see some great benefits from that.
And Julie, this is across the board for all students?
Correct.
And all teachers will have access to see the data?
Yes, K through twelve, pre-K through twelve.
Thank you.
Want you in to be able to get on there?
No, this is just for internal, internal. Parents will just still access information through their Infinit Campus portal. We can help you, Lynette.
I know, thank you.
Alright, summer school plans are underway, we had our initial meeting with site administrators, which are all of the assistant principals, and, uh, we've gotten the applications out to staff, and we've scheduled the dates, and we're working on all, fine-tuning all the details. District testing, we're looking at, uh, the MAP and E O C coming down the pipe soon, so, we're jumping in on that. I've been to a couple of trainings on district test coordination with those two programs, and we're. I've been to a couple of trainings on district test coordination with those two programs and we're taking measures to get started on that. Lots of steps to follow, I showed Dr. Lentz the email today, it's page after page after page of directions.
Full faith in your ability to navigate that for the kids.
Thanks, I'm gonna do it.
I'm gonna jump back in here and think on that. I wanted to share this with you all, I shared it with the salary committee, um, I don't think there's anything that you haven't seen before, but. Talked through the salary committee about, um. The salary schedule, and I think right now, that what we will bring to you all next month is a seven-hundred-dollar increase to the base. And then. You know, if you, if you went down to the bottom. Item five there, and I'd say those are models and they're probably a little too conservative to, to budget, you know, one and a half percent increase in revenue. Two years out with three and a half percent increase in expenditures, that's maybe a little bit too gloom, too doom and gloom, but. You know, the goal is to land somewhere between twenty and thirty percent in our fund balance without being on a runaway train that, that puts us in financial distress five years out. So I think the, the place where we can get ourselves in, on that path is with our salary schedule, so maybe it's a little bit of a decrease from several years in a row, we're adding a thousand dollars to the base. Talked through that with, with the CTA and. Felt like it was a positive meeting, uh, wanted to just share the exact same document with, with you all that I shared with them. Uh, the thing that's notable now that wasn't before, um, is we did get our health insurance renewal increase and it's at six-point-seven percent, which in the market right now is pretty good, actually. So that, now we have a firm number for how much, you know, the district wants to continue, uh, paying full price for the second most expensive premium, which would be my recommendation, now we know exactly how much that'll cost, so. I was, I think probably the first time I ran this, I probably had ten percent or more for, for our renewal, so. That's a little bit of good news.
Anybody have any questions? Are you finished?
I'm finishing.
Any questions? Um, building report, anybody have any questions on the building reports here? I would just like to thank all the administrators for putting those together, we do read them. And it's nice to see what's going on, the updates in the, in the buildings. Communications report, Marcy.
Anybody have any questions? It basically talked about the climate and culture survey, which is the next agenda item, so.
Marcy, do you want to talk about the climate and culture?
Yeah, there's a, there are several documents on there because we gave five surveys to, one to district parents. Uh, one to grades four and five students, one to grades six through twelve students, and then one to certificated staff and one to support staff. So this is what we do annually, it's part of our, uh, improvement plan for the state, we're required to do it, actually now it's part of our APR grade as well. And, um, the results were condensed into a document that is linked there under the first bullet, so. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Uh, with areas of, of improvement, do you ask people for suggestions when you do?
It's, it's not an open comment survey, it is, um. A linear scale, like, they have five options to choose from, Dussie gives us questions that we have to put on there also, so we try to follow their lead on how we word those. And then our survey was completed with other people in my Mostra Missouri School Public Relations Group, we got together. And several school districts in the area are using the same survey. One thing that really stuck out on the areas for improvement was student voice and engagement, and we can see that. I think C two C and, and whenever Carrie was at the lead, did a great job of that, of getting student voice involved, and I think that's something we should continue and we can continue at different levels, so. It is really great to see that, um, on our staff surveys, many people, over ninety percent commented, whenever the question was asked, various ways that they enjoy working here. So that's something that we can use for recruitment and retention efforts as we reach out to try to get people to Mexico and keep them here. And then that people felt safe at school, that was another good one.
Anybody have any questions?
What was your answer rate on this, I know it was probably higher than typical.
Well, actually, it wasn't this year.
It wasn't this year?
No, and at first I was a little bit disappointed, but then whenever I thought about it, if I go somewhere and get some work done on my Jeep and they do a great job, I'm probably not gonna fill out the survey. Um, but if they mess something up and I want to gripe about it, I'm probably gonna fill out the survey and then copy and paste all those comments on Facebook. So, if I, uh, I don't think that it was, it was bad, we had a great response rate in terms of internal survey, external survey rates. Uh, the parent surveys were down from last year, which I thought was interesting because with Parent Square, we have a better way to reach our audience. So that was a little bit surprising, but again, if seven hundred kids are telling me what they think, I think that's huge. Sometimes we pay attention to one to three to five voices and talk about it in this room, and I think we need to be talking about what seven hundred people have to say about it, so.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business number eight, um, approval of the MOU with Arthur Center Community, you have a motion?
To make a motion to approve the MOU with Arthur Center Community Health.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Do I have a motion to approve the MO, MOU with Partners for Rural Impact?
I'll make a motion to approve an MOU with Partners for Rural Impact.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. You abstain. You abstain. Chris?
I abstain.
I abstain. I've got, you, you are yes.
Four, zero, two?
Yep, four, zero, two. Do I have an approval for the Chromebook bid, uh, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid award for district Chromebooks. Second. S H I for Dell thirty-one twenty models and to C D W C for Dell thirty-one ten models.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six, zero. Moving on to personnel.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel as listed.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six, zero. Motion to approve the extra duty contracts as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the extra duty contracts as presented.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six, zero. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six, zero. Thank you.